Good evening. We'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I'd ask that you stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you kindly stand for a moment of silence for Kathleen Creighton. Kathy passed away a couple of days ago after a long illness. She had served as a member of the Conservation Commission and as well as the Community Preservation Committee and the Bylaw Review Committee in addition to the Charter Review Committee. Her wake will be held this Thursday at Cohen's Funeral Home in South Weymouth and a funeral mass at St. Bridget's on Friday at 11:00 a.m., so please join me in a moment of silence for Kathy Creighton. Are there any public announcements from the members of the Board of Selectmen?
Anything, Tim?
Not for me.
I just have one.
Sure.
I just want to start, so good evening. I want to take a quick minute of your time to talk about what transpired at the last meeting. As we were conducting normal business of the town, a former member of this board took an extraordinary step of making accusations against someone going for appointment to a committee. Due to the pending litigation, I will not get into any details about the situation, but I wanted to hit on a few key issues and points so that you, the resident, the business owner, the homeowner, or any other person coming into this town, conducting business, can understand where this board stands. What happened at that meeting was unprecedented, and that is not what we are about. That is not how we behave, and that's not what we do. So for anyone that has reservations about coming in front of this board, or volunteering for our committee, or coming in for a business hearing, or any other business, that behavior will not be tolerated, nor will that happen again. Please accept our sincere apology for having to go through that tumultuous meeting. This is a unified board, and we are committed to holding a professional standard and giving you, the resident, the homeowner, the business owner, a respectful and professional experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuzzo. All set. Okay, a public comment, any comments from the public at all? Seeing a hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. First item, I just want to make note of the fact that we did receive a letter of resignation from Selectman Alex Hagerty, effective immediately. It was dated and stamped by the town clerk on January 17th. We want to thank Alex for his three years of service on the Board of Health, as well as three years of service on the Board of Selectmen. In addition to that, because of resignation, Section 3.2 of the Charter states that vacancies in the office of selectmen, other than those occurring in the three months immediately preceding the annual town election, shall be filled by special election. We had asked town council, because this resignation fell actually 10 days outside of that requirement, and I'll spare the legal ease, but in the last paragraph, town council says, and I just would like to read this, "In this matter, the vacancy of the select board occurred just 10 days outside the window for filling the vacancy at the annual election, and Mr. Hagerty's seat will be on the annual town election ballot in any event. In my opinion, it would be a waste of the town's resources to hold a special election, to fill a seat that will again be voted on at the annual election just several weeks later, and it is not reasonable to interpret the Charter to require this result. Therefore, it is my opinion that the Board of Selectmen is not required to call a special election, and it can instead wait for the seat to be filled at the annual town election." Papers are available at the town clerk's office, and I believe they'll do back on March 11th. With that said, because there is a vacancy in the office of chairman, we would now be fitting improper for the board to reorganize as it relates to the position of chairman and depending on that election, you know, maybe for another office as well. But this would be just for the remainder of this current cycle, so then in April, after the annual town election, we would again reorganize as we ordinarily would. So I will throw it to the town manager to conduct the election for chairman.
Do we hear any nominations?
I nominate Kevin Donovan for chairman.
Do we hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
Do we hear any other nominations for chairman? Based on that, can I have a vote for Kevin for chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's your meeting, sir.
Thank you, and because I was the vice chairman, we'll have a, the position of vice chairman is open, so I'll entertain nominations for the position of vice chairman.
I nominate Tim Chapin for vice chair.
Motion for Tim Chapin, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of Tim Chapin kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or voted, congratulations. Do you mind if we play musical chairs? I really prefer to sit next to Scott so he can kick me when I do something wrong. So pick up your nameplates.
You can't move faster than the floor. Take your little sign.
It's a long way out.
Much better.
Oops, sorry.
Oops. Thank you very much, and let's proceed. We have a meeting with the Abington Affordable Housing Trust and the Griffins Dairy Committee to discuss the potential of passing off a portion of land currently part of Griffins Farm for construction of an affordable housing unit. The chairman, Kenny Coyle, do you want to come up first, and then we can?
Sure.
And Kerry, are you the chairman of Griffins Dairy? Okay.
Thank you. Abington Affordable Housing Trust was formed in 2020, town meeting, town meeting vote. We have a few members here tonight. The mission, we just finished our mission's values, a statement, and our action plan. I just want to read to you, since we're so new, I just kind of want to read a little bit about what our plan is and what our goals are. The mission of the Abington Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to acquire, create, preserve, retain, and support affordable housing for the benefit of low and moderate income households in the town of Abington. The trust pursues and enables creative, collaborative, and effective methods of producing and preserving low and moderate income housing. We all know there's a need for more housing in Abington, more affordable housing. Some of our values, we want to collaborate and build community partnerships. We want to educate the community about affordable housing and Abington's housing needs. That's one of our main priorities right now at the beginning, just to educate people what affordable housing is and what we need. Just some facts that we came up with doing our action plan. Abington's housing market is very tight, as we are all well aware, with 0.7% homeowner vacancy rates, so there's not many houses that are available. In 2022, these numbers are staggering, and anybody that owns a house in Abington and has to pay the taxes knows this, but the median sales price of a single-family home in Abington in 2022 was $525,000. To afford this purchase price, applying today's average mortgage rates and Abington's current property tax rate, a household would need, a household would need to earn approximately $190,000 annually. The average median income for a household is $113,000. Households earning, Abington's median household could afford a home of approximately $315,000, which is $210,000 less than the 2022 median sales price. And the number of single-family homes sold annually has dipped since 2020, and the sale prices have not fallen. So enough of that. When we first met, we had a meeting probably, I'm going to say, a year and a half ago. Interested parties and the Social Habitat for Humanity came to our, to our board and asked if there was any, they wanted a list of available properties in Abington. And before they even given that list, the town manager mentioned that maybe the Glen O'Witts Way property might be a good location for a house or houses, being directly across from the senior center, which from the senior housing, we thought was a great idea. That came before this board, and that did not fly. So we were licking our wounds, and we had a new member who mentioned, well, why don't we look at Griffins Dairy? Maybe possibly some house lots up there, or there's some property, there's a lot of land up there, and maybe we could find something. So I'm going to turn it over now, if I, if, with your permission, to our, the Social Habitat for Humanity members that we've been meeting with. We have Noreen Brown and Dick Halverson, who are here, and they'd like to speak a little bit about, if you're not well aware, Abington has two, I might be writing on their parade, but has two properties, two houses. Social Habitat for Humanity has two affordable houses in Abington. One that was built with much fanfare, a lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers here in Abington, and ironically, it's a stone's throw from Griffins Farm. It's on Charles Street. And the other house is, came later on, but I'm just going to turn it over to the Social Habitat for Humanity.
Sure. If you could just give us your name and position, just for the record, if you mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Noreen Brown. I'm the director of project development for Social Habitat for Humanity. So we've been around for about 37 years, building affordable homes throughout the service area. We do have two in Abington, like Ken had said. We typically build very modest homes between 1,300 to 1,500 square feet. We, we sell them at below-market rate to below-market sale price to homes earning no more than 80% of the area median income. We have typically three bedrooms, two baths, and our homes are counted on the subsidized housing inventory, which would help increase your number to get to the 10% of the goal of the state to have, to have your houses counted on that inventory. The two homes we have, I think we're 95 and 2000, so it has been a while since we built here. We started meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust about over a year ago, like you said, and with Scott, talking about some, some particular land over on Glen Owiddick Sweat. So we would be interested in maybe putting a home, working with the town to see if there's room for maybe one home affordable over on the Griffins Dairy land.
Could you just tell us, in terms of the process, this would be, if the town were to vote it, and I imagine we'd have to go to town meeting to get ultimate authority, but the land would be deeded to Habitat, is that correct?
Yes.
And then you, in turn, do you sell it to the individuals?
We do sell it, yep. So they'll purchase the home at a below-market rate. Typically now, our homes are going for under $260,000, depending if it's three-bedroom, four-bedroom, whatever the house is. We typically do two, three, or four-bedroom homes.
So they, so the land would go with the house itself?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And is there a covenant that requires that if they should sell it, that it has to be?
So the deed, it would be, there was a deed restriction on it issued by the Department of, the, sorry, DHCD.
Yeah. They change every five years.
I know, I know this one, I know this one.
Yeah. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Yeah, Livable Communities, yes. So yes, we'd use their deed restriction, so it would all be approved by them at the state level to verify that it meets the criteria to get it on the subsidized housing inventory, and that deed restriction would be recorded at the sale, at the sale of that home. That requires, that keeps the home affordable in perpetuity, and then when they go to sell that home, they can sell it to another family earning no more than 80% of the area median income. So it'll be, in perpetuity, it would be affordable.
Okay. And in terms of, do any of the board have any questions as it relates to the process for the Social Habitat?
Bye, Bill.
Nothing?
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Coyle.
Oh.
The recommendation of your Housing Affordable Trust Committee is such that you're just looking for a parcel of land, is that correct?
Yes, I know that, I'm going to show how old I am, but I was-
You're younger than me, Ken.
Yeah, I could be a wise guy, but I don't want to keep on. I was chairman of the Finance Committee when this came before town meeting, and I was on the original Griffins Dairy Committee. So I know when the plan was put in place, there was talk about selling lots off on the outskirts to reimburse the town for, believe it or not, they only paid $750,000 for that, 64-plus acres. But there was talk about on the outskirts where it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the park itself. Back then, maybe some lots on Patterson and some Charles Street. So there's talk about that. So, again, I think that personally, personally, not a voter of our board, but would be happy if just a lot was given.
Rig up.
Yep. Doesn't matter where, you know?
Okay.
A nice lot would be in the middle of the park, the Dyke Dirt Road to go to it, but no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Trouble, Mike. Is it, any, as far as the board goes, any comments before we move to Griffins?
No.
No.
No, I'd like to hear from Griffins.
Thank you. If I was to confirm the minutes.
Griffins Dairy. Somebody from Griffins, Kerry? Kerry Bates, chairman of Griffins Dairy.
Yes, Carolyn Bates, 41 Oakland Circle. I am the chairperson and acting secretary of the Griffin Dairy Committee. It's my thinking, and I'm reading this, and I will give you each a copy of this, rather than maybe try to remember what I have to say, but it's my thinking that we would all like to get this settled as quickly and as amicably as possible. So certainly Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity is highly regarded internationally. In fact, I have worked on two of the houses, the one on Charles Street and another one in Henson years ago. Very rewarding experience, particularly for the family that was, came in. The issue here is for you, the Honorable Board of Selectmen, to decide to allow or not allow home construction on a portion of the town-owned property named Griffin Dairy Farm. This committee oversees and physically maintains this property and has done so since 2011. In the years prior to the pandemic, we gave an annual update to the Board of Selectmen, and we haven't done this for several years. However, so we can understand why you don't know really where, what we're doing, what we have done, so we would like to update you tonight as well. We'd like to divide up and have members of the committee, there are seven of us, but not all of us are going to speak, if you would allow us to do this, on a portion of what we are doing in, at the former Griffin Dairy. So we would, we would like you all to understand that we deliberated, voted, and wrote a letter to deny any request to build on any portion of the property. We send it to you, to the Affordable Housing Committee, simply as information as to what our desires are. The original Griffin Dairy Committee Advisory Committee, 2001 through 2004, stated, "Open space has a value that is impossible to put a price tag on. Whether or not anything is, quote, 'happening' on the fields or parking area on Patterson Street, they are there for future recreational, both passive and active use.'" Again, the first committee stated, "Under future use, our committee feels that the farm was bought to prevent overdevelopment and that housing development projects would not be appropriate on this site. It's our hope that you will vote to retain this priceless property for open space recreation as it was originally intended." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now pass it on to Terry Mays, if that's-
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, with the board? Thank you.
Go right ahead. Greetings. Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street, a member of the Griffins Dairy Committee. I've been asked to represent the mission and the accomplishments of this committee. First, I'm a member with the shortest time on the committee, although I was corrected on that tonight. I have seen the commitment and dedication from this membership that I believe cannot be fully appreciated without witnessing it. I've also witnessed the others who volunteer their time, commitment, and personal resources, which Rich will speak to later. I remember when the committee was formed, the passion from the townspeople to keep this town resource as open space. Remember the frequent use of "in perpetuity" at those town meetings? Since that time, much, much has been accomplished. Old Colony Planning Council provided recommendations, which has served as this committee's roadmap. Four out of the five overall recommendations have been met and are ongoing. For the one item not fully met, the multipurpose playing fields, the committee did all the prep work to include redoing the locations of the bridges as to not impact the future locations of said playing fields. At this time, it has not been pursued by the town nor the sports organizations. Of the 16 specific recommendations, the committee has completed and have in progress 15 of the 16, the 16th being of which around the multipurpose sports field. What has the committee committed, completed in our commitment to this mission? Fields were cleared of debris. Trees around the property are being maintained. Fields are being mowed. Grass and flowers have been planted and are being maintained. Walking paths were constructed with two bridges. Seeding areas have been created, fencing added, leasing to growers to use for hay and corn, constructed parking lots on Patterson Street and Plymouth Street, and of course, the expansion of the community garden. The committee actively pursued two recommendations, two of the recommendations around solar energy, which were, which were investigated. We met with multiple solar companies without a feasible solution at this time. I can always have hope. We have welcomed food trucks. We've had two community yard sales, which we plan to expand by partnering with the Abington Celebrates coming this spring. We've also partnered with the library, has put up the Sports Storybook Trail along our walking trail. I invite anyone who has not seen these improvements come to the Griffin's Dairy Farm and take a walk. Check out the signage, look at the amazing community garden that started with just a random dozen or so. This is what this committee does best. Please do not infringe on the dedication and commitment by changing the usage of this property and open us up to the slippery slope away from open space. I think the idea to add housing to this property will limit the ability for this committee to continue to manage the property as it has been, to provide open space for generations to come. Thank you for listening to me, and I'm going to pass it over to Rich.
Good evening, everyone. Richard Hannah, 143 Mill Street. Mine isn't quite as long, it's a little shorter. I joined the committee, I was appointed in 2017, when they expanded it from five to seven. My feeling at that time, when I went in, that this would be all open space. And you all have gone through prior to that with the soccer fields and everything else with the high school, so there's been some ongoing talk about it. I want to let you know, because you probably don't understand, you all have your own personal lives, and you're doing this for free, like we do it for free. A lot of hours go up there. We do 90% of the maintenance up there. We cut trees, we cut the lawn, we dig holes, we move stones, we work on the fence. John Stone is great when we need him. I think we had him up here once this year doing some filling of roadway. Scott has been tremendous. We finally got, if you haven't been by there, the well out front is filled in, so we're going to expect Scott down there next Saturday with his kids, and they're going to start building a house on top of it for us, so, you know, thank God for Scott.
There used to be one there.
But just to let you know, with the volunteers, they put over 1,500 hours in this year. Last year was over 2,000. A lot more going on. One thing, we understand, you guys are the boss. You make the final decision. We have no problems with that. We understand that. We have three riding mowers. One was bought by the town. Two have been donated. We've gone through two others, and this year here, we've done all the maintenance. John Stone will do some of the work, but we've changed the oil, we fixed flat tires. It's only major when we call them, so they do help us out, there's no doubt about it. We don't want to be a thorn in them. If we can take care of it, then we take care of it. I think you've all been up there, and you can see how Brian and his crew have cut the walkways and things. One thing I do want to just express to you, and I did express this to Ken, to get to this field, and we cut this once a year, to get to this field, we need an access road, if you so choose, to give them an okay to put a house in there. And the reason is, we needed a 50-foot access road to get to here, to get to this field. The only other way we can get in that field is through these culverts. Conservation, I don't want them, they don't want us in there, plus the farmer doesn't want to go in there with his tractor, with his bush hog, because he damages it. So if you so choose to want to put a house in there, we need that 50-footer in there. And we would like it on the left-hand side, so it would come out with that walkway. We could always continue that walkway. We've had some talk that there is another connection to the rail trail back here, but we go through some wetlands. And actually, I had talks a couple of years ago with Kathy about it, and she said that we could do something to get there. And if you follow that path into the old sewer beds, there's a wet area, and it gets into the extension wires, and you can follow the extension wires right down the rail trail. So this is about all I have to say. I know you're going to be talking about that parking lot after this, so I thank you for listening to me, and I just hope we get the right thing done, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hand it off to Lorraine.
Lorraine Mayson, 162 Linwood Street. I first began involved with the Griffin's Dairy through the Sage Committee, when we're working with the solar energy, as far as having it investigated up there, and also starting the community gardens. I was asked to join the Griffin's Dairy Advisory Board after one of the original members had resigned. I assume since our committee was working under the directive of the Board of Selectmen since 1990, when one of the board, when the first board was nominated, that you were aware of all the goings-on that was going on at Griffin's Dairy. And we were asked to do a presentation at the veterans ceremony at the senior center, and we had so many people come up to us and ask, as, as we were describing to them, the different stuff that was going on and what was, what had happened up there, that so many said they were completely unaware of what was happening up at Griffin's Dairy. And then I remembered COVID, when we stopped coming before you, telling you what was, what we were doing, and so forth and so on. So with that being said, the present committee was established in 2011, and the directive of your board was get back to the Board of Selectmen in one year, of which I think Kevin you were part of at that point, with the best use of the town-owned property for open space and recreation, which we did at least once a year until COVID. With the present committee, the work began, all done by volunteers from 2011 to 2017. During that time, we were donated five sit-down lawnmowers. We had, we donated a dumpster for the general area cleanup, the use of a backhoe to move the shed and move large limbs to the burn pile, the use of a rototiller for the community gardens, disposal and trash bags for general cleanup, the mowing of the fields, trees, trees planting, including pear, rose share, and hydrangeas, laurels, blueberry bushes, and yearly flowers around the sign, and the kiosks built by the Eagle Scouts, Abington Eagle Scouts. Christmas trees, six benches, both wood and stone, in memory of the long-term residents, the flagpole, the little free library, and three picnic benches. This was all donations to us, all, all volunteers. Then in 2017, after a lot of work, the town voted in the Community Preservation Act. Members, our members voted on projects we needed financial help with, like walkways, bridges, surveying the property lines, the designated wetlands, fencing being our first priorities. We put, we put together projects and presented- We put, we put together projects and presented them to the CPC. Then, after the CPC approves it, then it comes back to us, where we have to go back, get three quotes for a formal presentation back to the CPC. After the CPC approves it, then it comes back to the town manager, the finance committee, and the Board of Selectmen to be put on the town meeting warrant. Then it goes to the town meeting, where our voters vote on it. When accepted, as all our projects have been, it then goes to the state of Massachusetts to see if they like it and will accept it. So, if they accept it, then we get the money on July, the following July 1st, to start a project, whatever project is that year. Our completed projects to date are just under two hundred and forty thousand dollars from CPC. Much of this was the surveying of Patterson Street, the parking lot, the fencing around it, the fencing on both sides of the property line off of Patterson, the gates, the walkways, and the cleanup of the wetlands to try and get the water out of the homes on Patterson. To take this town-owned property that has been improved to the point this property has, through the vast work of so many volunteers, their time, their labor, their dollar donations, and the CPA dollars, would again, in my opinion, be a huge injustice, not only to the community members, but, I'm sorry, to the committee members, but to the CPC members who entrusted us with their decisions, and also to the town meeting voters who give their approval of improvements with their tax dollars. My hope is now you have a better understanding of why our committee wrote the letter and signed it, asking not to have housing put on this property. Thank you very much. And I'm going to pass it on to Mary Ann Papacino.
I'm very, very short. Honestly.
That's quite alright.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Papacino, and I live at 609 Hancock Street in Abington, obviously. I've been, I've been the only member for a very short time, I think the shortest out of all, so I am the shortest and the least to say, but, although I think it's important. I have seen the immense amount of work to keep Griffin's Dairy for recreation and open space for members of the community, and feel it should be kept this way. From the community gardens, walking paths, and storybook trails, just to name a few, Griffin's Dairy has become a place that not only provides recreation, but nourishes the mind, body, and soul, and should be kept that way.
Anything else to be said? Billy, Billy Davis.
William Harry Davis, 115th from the street. I've been a volunteer at Griffin's ever since it opened up and everything, and Habitat for Humanity, thank you for all that you do. The parcel where they're thinking about putting it, I've always had a vision of having, like, wiffle ball tournaments there, kickball tournaments and everything. So, that, that area itself is just kind of important to me. I'm a little too old to start organizing something like that, but I agree with the board. They took their time, I mean, we had multiple discussions at the meeting, even though I'm not a board member, I am passionate about Griffin's Dairy. It's a park in town. I don't think anybody would want to put houses at Arnold's Park or Island Grove. All these places are important to the town, and we're lucky that we have Griffin's Dairy. So, I just wanted to come up and put that in there. My heart is racing. I don't like public speaking.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Sure, come on down. Richard Hannah, 143 Mill Street. I have a letter here from Ian Riley. She would just as soon let you read the letter.
Why, certainly.
Yep. And I'll give you a little. Okay. Would pass more of you?
Sure, no, that's fine. Thank you.
So, Ann's been very helpful over the years. If it wasn't for Ann, we probably wouldn't be in the position we are today. And thank you, Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to synopsize, Ian Riley had given us a letter, she's against the move. The Griffin's Farm was purchased for agricultural, open space, and recreation. We hope to expand the recreational in the area directly in front of the parking lot, which may require expansion of the parking area in the future. The lot to the right of the parking lot is being used as an area of planting of Christmas trees. Workout stations hopefully will be added to the pass that may encourage community members to enjoy Griffin's Farm even more. Once the area plan for recreation is groomed and maintained, it may be a great idea for kickball tournaments, kite flying, and other recreational activities. Once the land is built on, nothing else can be planned for recreation in the area. Has someone from the town and the assessors office been working with Habitat to go over all the vacant properties in Abington? We are not against Habitat, but not in favor of it going there. We have several projects that have been in the works for over ten years. The North and Center Schools, the Center School in particular, is losing its value daily with all the broken windows and graffiti. Getting a tax title attorney to clear the deed to Mabel Butler's land and build more senior housing behind Blanchard Gardens. Just, if I could, just to give a very briefly, a history, back in nineteen ninety-eight, I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time. I was only fifteen when I was on the board. And actually, I ran into, I'll tell you the story. I was coming out of St. Burgess, and Jimmy Griffin and I were walking out of St. Burgess, and he told me that they had agreed to sell the farm. And at that point, I said I wanted to champion the cause for the town to purchase it. We did. We went in, and I was vociferous in my advocacy to ensure that it be maintained as a farm, because my hobbies, as some of you know, is just that. So much so, that it was a very lively debate at town meeting, and I pulled out the records this afternoon, and that the article that was, was voted upon was for public purposes, including open space and recreation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to do everything necessary and desirable to purchase and improve the land for said purposes. That went to town meeting, then ultimately to a debt exclusion election, which passed both. So, the question becomes is that it's something over time has been clearly, you know, that has been the focus. Now, the only thing I want to throw out there, having said all of that, and understanding where I came from, because I was the catalyst that went forward to, for the town to purchase it twenty-six years ago. My only thought, and I just throw this out there, and I don't know if it's something to consider, if you, for the old timers, will remember where Jimmy Griffin lived, at 169 Charles Street. If you go down the end of Charles Street to the right, is some wooded area in there. I would not be in favor of taking any of the parking lot or any of that, but if you went down the end of Charles Street to the right, again, I'm just saying that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't encroach upon the fields itself, or we could look at Glenwood's Way, and I guess I want to throw it back to the board. If you could just, Scott, bring up Charles Street a little bit more.
Which way do you want to go?
No.
No, other way.
Up, no. There you go.
Zoom in a bit.
So, yeah, if you go the end of Charles Street, there you go. Right in there, right across from that house there.
That?
No. There you go, right in there. This, this is big. Terry?
We both grew up in that area, so we know in the wintertime that that gets flooded. So, the end of Charles Street is, gets completed, completely flooded, at least it did in the seventies and eighties, where you could ice skate on it. And a lot, after the old Griffin's home, along the right there were, was a lot of flooding. So, I don't know how feasible as far as...
Yeah, the irrigation pond was out there, but also after they put sewage in, and I think sewage went, sewage does go down there, and I don't know whether that abated the question. It's something to look into, absolutely. No, and I know exactly what you're talking about. I guess the question for the board is, I know the prior board had, had discussed Glenwood's Way, and at the time, there was questions about it. Do you, do we want to debate this now? What are your thoughts?
Debate Glenwood's Way, you do?
I think, I think that's a bigger conversation.
Well, that's, I'm saying is, is in terms of Griffin's Dairy versus Glenwood's Way, is that something perhaps we should have the town manager take a look at and come back with a recommendation?
I think so.
I don't, I mean, why don't we just settle this tonight, and then we can look at other properties if this doesn't pass? Can do that to you?
Can I speak, or someone who's on any of these? Go back.
Sure. Just give us your name and address.
Yeah, obviously, clearly, it was not part of me today.
Don't worry about it.
Because I'm still, Amanda's on Petty, 50 Pilgrim Street. As someone who was fifteen in nineteen ninety-eight, might have actually been thirteen or fourteen, but it's fine. And also, who really pushed with Scott to purchase, you know, the Zero Rockland Street, and quite a few other pieces with open space. I struggle with, I get, we want to keep open space. It's a parking lot that's not used, the house does not get near the community gardens, it's an opportunity for people like me who want to move into this community, get out of cities, or get closer to their in-laws and parents. It's two families. Island Grove is not ruined, because when I come out, I see two houses just outside the parking lot. Ames Knoll is not ruined, when I can cut through somebody's backyard that's my friend to get to the park. It's still open space, it's still available. It's so hard to find a good community with good homes that Abington offers. My joke is, I'm not a townie, but I'm raising one. My son's in second grade here in Abington. I'm heavily involved in the town, heavily involved in the schools. It's been an amazing community, and if we can bring in just one more family, two more families that wouldn't have that opportunity otherwise, you, you can still use the park. If anything, by having more people close to the park, you're bringing in more youth, you're bringing more people that look at it. I mean, you have, was it Bellew Circle is right up against it. That doesn't ruin Griffin's Dairy in any ways. You guys have done a fabulous job with the park. I use it quite a bit, I love the story walk. I've done quite a bit of hikes with Hike a Baby through there and organizations. I recommend it to everybody whenever they can. I highly recommend you lease your dog, that's a whole other thing, but I, as, as somebody who doesn't have skin in the game, so to speak, on any of these committees, you have to balance both. We can't just keep saying no, no, no to housing, and then being mad when tax rates go up, when no one moves here, when your kids move farther away to the Carolinas because they can't afford to move close to you. We have to do something to keep this community the way it is, and sometimes we have to give a little. I mean, look where the parking lot is. I mean, how big are these houses going to be? It's what, point one acre probably is the, like, sorry, like... Let's be honest, this is a two-family, three-family?
Three.
Three-family. So, three-family, one-family, one-family. Like, it doesn't even, you can still have that at the parking lot. I just, this is a whole pool. I just, I feel like we need to balance, is how, is in my thought, as someone who's not on any of these. As you can tell, I'm really passionate about this, but I, that's just my heavy, strong opinion.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I may, Kevin?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I am the liaison for the housing authority, and I was the one who had said, when they were saying land, that maybe on Patterson, by the parking lot, would be a good piece of property. As we got more into the discussion, and you kind of looked at everything, there were other two properties on the other side of Griffin's Dairy that they were looking at, but it really didn't have a lot of access. Charles Street, at the end of Charles Street, in my opinion, is a better scenario to put a home in. It doesn't really affect the gardens, it doesn't really affect the walking path, and it also keeps the parking lot clear for people. There is a balance, you know, what happened in, you know, nineteen ninety is very different than two thousand and twenty-four. So, I like the Charles Street, if you grew up on Charles Street, and I didn't, I am not a townie here, but I have friends who grew up on Charles Street, it is a most amazing neighborhood, and that's what we want. When people come here and buy houses and stay here in Abington, we want to be with that community. So, I don't really recommend, and this is my opinion, a house next door or right next to the parking lot, but a house at the end of Charles Street, as long as it doesn't flood, Terry Mace, that would be a great area for one or two houses.
The, the sports fields, the last piece to this puzzle for Griffin's Dairy, if you will, would taking this land for a house affect that plan for the sports fields?
No, could you see where the line is? If you can make that, Scott.
On top of things, Scott.
No, other side, other way. Down? No.
Would you like the remote?
Yeah. So, see where the parking lot is?
Yep.
If I'm correct, the parking lot and that area, when you walk out, that would be where they would have the kite flying and wiffle ball and whatever other field. So, I don't think it really detracts having some type of field, some type of sports field.
Okay. Dick, just...
I just want to mention one thing. Richard Hannah, 143 Mill Street. She pointed out this area you're here for a home, and there's no doubt that's a good place, but that's conservation. The reason why is when they built this parking lot to support that field, one of the DPW guys built the parking lot out here, and Jim told me on the Conservation Commission to stop them. So, that's what, I'm not saying you can't build, but that is going to be a problem. Yeah. Yeah.
And what the, and I just want to say, what the Griffin's Dairy Committee has done over the years is amazing. You guys are all amazing rock stars. This was a piece of land that had nothing, and you cleared it, and you took care of it, and you nurtured it, and the community gardens is very special to my heart. It is an amazing piece of property. You guys would be commended for the work you've done.
Yeah, I'll just say that the land was fought for, paid for, and voted on to be open space and recreation. The, there's people making that vision come true. I mean, they're doing an amazing job up there, and it takes a lot of time, because there's not a lot of funds, and there's, quite frankly, not a lot of volunteers helping them, it's a small group of people. But they are making that vision come true. If this land has, had been sitting there for the twenty-some-odd years and just, I would think about differently, but there's no way I could ever vote to put any housing on a property that they're working so hard to maintain, for the reason that the voters, the residents voted for it to be.
I don't think anybody's against Habitat for Humanity.
Right.
They all want to be...
One hundred percent.
It's just coming to a...
Right. And I have to honestly say...
If they want to tear down some schools, I got some good properties, Father.
That was built years and years ago, I think ninety-five. There is another home there for Habitat for Humanity. So, would it be, just to have another one at the end, would kind of like build that community.
Doesn't Center School come with Murphy'sville and like thirteen-some...
We can, we've voted to split the deed, so we don't, it doesn't have to be the whole thing. We can, we can split that and sell it, or do whatever separate.
Does that school just sit there and wait?
Right, I mean, like I said, if they wanted to tear it down, I would be all in favor of that, but...
Unfortunately.
Right, unfortunately, the property's not worth much money, and the cost to tear it down is quite expensive.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Yep.
I just, I was a little bit younger, and you were sixteen, I was probably. As chairman of the Finance Committee, I just want to read some of the things that I said that, that night, because I have my notes and still, this is back when the Finance Committee used to give their recommendations and, you know. "The bulk of this land can remain as open space or recreation, the bulk of this land. It's golden opportunity to purchase large amount of undeveloped land at a reasonable, reasonable price. It was voted for public purposes, including open space and recreation, and I also said to use the net proceeds from the sale of the site or portions of the site to pay down the outstanding principal of said bonds." So, there was discussion about, you know, breaking your partner. Kevin spoke to that, at that meeting too, so...
This would still have to go to town meeting for the residents to vote on fully, correct? I mean, I'm twenty, the way, I see both sides to it, but...
I think that they'll look at any portion of it.
Well, how about, can I maybe suggest this? Maybe if the town manager takes a look at...
We have plenty of parcels still.
Yeah, exactly. Look at, look at, throw it up to any...
Sorry, I have to, I have to, we... Sorry, I have to, I have to, we, we do have the parcel. We have Glenowits Way. But after the auction, most of the parcels that were of any value went. So there isn't a lot of land out there that's just, that we've got from tax title that is buildable. We did have a lot of parcels that were left over and a lot that didn't sell, but basically because they were either ledge, underwater, conservation, whatever. So, so the, you know, we do look and we periodically look to see if there's anything else that's coming up to surplus that we can do this with. The biggest opportunities we have right now, and we are working on the North and Center School, for any real serious housing, but to do anything with real impact, like this Glenowits Way property is probably your, your biggest, best, most available parcel right now.
I mean, I agree, the residents voted a certain way on this land, so I see that. I would like to see the vision, you know, come, come true with the sports fields there, because I think that's a great use. Does that open up any other areas in town? Glenowits, could we take another look? Things like that. I mean, it still would have to go to the town, town meeting, but I don't know. Kind of torn on it.
Well, do you want to authorize the town manager to look at Glenowits Way and any, or any additional parcels that may come up and put this to the side? Or what do you want to?
We had looked at Glenowits Way before.
Yeah, can you come to the microphone? I know you don't like to, but state your name and address, please.
Anne Riley, 262 Adams Street, Abington. We had looked at Glenowits Way before. We had a meeting about it, and the prognosis was that we were waiting to see where the basketball court was going to be going from its present, present location by the police station, and that that might be the place where it should go. And to have a young family live in a house on Glenowits Way across from the senior center, I don't think would be ideal personally. But that's, that's all I thought. We kind of had the meeting about it, and I thought the consensus was not to do it there.
Yeah, I think I, that was a prior board, but I thought since that point, the old tree at Arnold Park has.
Yeah.
Met its demise, and there's certainly, from my standpoint, enough, enough room at Arnold Park to relocate the basketball courts.
There's already a basketball court there.
Exactly. And you could add to it if you wanted to, but.
I'd rather have one on the other side of town, but I get your point.
Yeah.
And you can't build a house on, on Arnold's Park because it's in the deed.
I guess, I guess my other worry with this is if we allow, if we move forward with one, let's, you know, are we going to come back with another, and another, and another, and chip away at the land? I don't know if that will happen, but just I could see that, you know, if the residents vote in favor.
And that's what the Housing Committee is doing, there, looking at all options.
Yeah. But I'm saying this specific property of land, you know.
I'm ready to vote on this right now.
So can I ask the Griffin's Dairy Committee, if it's on Patterson, if that changed and we weren't, the how, the affordable housing wasn't going to be built on Patterson, would you consider if it went through conservation, because of course you had brought that up, the end of Charles Street? Would that be an equal? Come on, three. I know, but. I just want to get a feeling from your board, if that would be a better place to put, to look at the affordable housing at the end of Charles Street? Not at Patterson. Let me be clear, not at Patterson.
Not at Patterson, not to take.
At the end of Charles Street.
Not to take away any of the walking paths?
Right, not to take away anything, because there was like four or five parcels on Griffin's Dairy that the affordable housing was looking at. And this, it was Patterson or the end of Charles? And I think the end of Charles is a better, it's just a better plan.
I think I definitely feel, I can't answer for the whole board, but I feel because when we were looking at solar out there, because it was so wet, it became completely not even good for solar. So I have trouble seeing a house there. And I also have trouble, Suzanne, I could agree with you as far as if we say yes to one, are we just, now are we going to lose two, three, four?
I don't think it really opens that door, but I would go to the Affordable Housing Committee and ask them that.
And while I'm standing here, I know my board's going to kill me for this. I wish, we're all volunteer board. You guys are all a volunteer board. I wish we had got together as committees, together, to work this out before we brought it here. I don't like this pitting one committee against another. I hate it because we're all volunteers here, just like you guys.
Agreed.
That being said.
Thank you, Laura.
Could this still get brought to town meeting without, without our vote anyways? I mean, there could be a warrant, an article put on town meeting?
There could, but.
Or does it have to go through us first? Well, I mean, you'd have the.
It'd have to be a citizen's petition.
It'd be a petition, but at the end of the day, that's just authorization. The selectman would still have to vote on it.
Can, Scott, can we take, can you take a look at that land and see?
The Charles Street?
Yeah, at the end of Charles Street? And then we can come back and make a kind.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, one more person.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Hurry, what are you going to?
No, no, I told her to come up. I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Normally I don't like to speak, but this is, I'm very passionate about this. We have a house on Charles Street. What about all the property behind it? There's not enough space behind the existing house to open up that road and put a house back there? It'd be right next to the walking trail? I don't, you're not going to have any water issues on that street?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
The road, where we have the house on Charles Street right now, which is next to the walking path, that used to be the railroad, the rail trail.
Yeah.
There's, there's the Habitat for Humanity house there, and behind it is the rest of the property that goes way back where the old filter beds used to be. There's a road there. If you open that gate, fix that road, there's at least one spot, I believe, that would be enough place for one house, and it would be less wet.
And that's not part of Griffin's farm? But it is owned by the town?
Is it owned by the town?
Well, that's something I.
I'll have to, I'll have to look at it.
I don't know that it is or isn't.
Okay, last, go ahead, Carrie, last question.
I think the opportunity to look into the end of Charles Street is a very good one. Patterson Street, I think right on the next on the agenda is possibly opening up, and we've found out that there is a need for that parking lot because of the rail trail. People are parking both on Monroe Street and on Charles Street and blocking homes because they want to use, they would like to use the rail trail. So open up the, the parking lot and use that for the, the need that, that is there. So I think that my personal opinion, and I, we haven't even discussed this about Charles Street, but that's my personal opinion. I think that would be a better, certainly a better choice. And if there are any other opportunities that come up in town, wonderful. And I love working for Habitat for Humanity. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chaplin.
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion that we deny parceling off any portion of land currently part of Griffin's Farm for construction of any housing units.
Second for discussion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Just what I said, I don't think there should be any housing on any part of that property.
I'm still on the, the idea, it's very difficult for young people to move into town. The, the prices of houses are outrageous, especially with the middle class, and asking for one piece, we're not, it, it doesn't jump, like, you know, we're not contractors. And I'm speaking for Kenny at the end of Charles Street. I don't think it affects Griffin's Dairy. I, I'm not sure about what conservation or wetlands or, you know, any of that, but we definitely need to take care of our people and make sure that I, our young people have a house and raise a family here. There's so many families that are moving out of Abington because they can't afford it. And it's not just Abington, it's Massachusetts, it's, it's, you know, it's just our society. So I would recommend looking into that piece of property at the end of Patterson, at the end of Charles Street.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Chaplin's motion kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
It's tough to be the king.
It is, yeah. I, uh.
That's why I had to nominate you.
I'm, I'm torn because number one, what I did back in 1998, and number two, looking at it from a pragmatic standpoint, I am going to vote no currently, but what I'm going to suggest, so it fails on a two to two vote, but what I'm going to suggest then is that the town manager can research the question of Charles Street up by the old sewer beds to make a determination and/or Glenowits Way first, and then come back, and if we have to, because I, I think, let's be honest, and echoing what Terry said, down, down there, it is wet. I do not know, sitting here, whether Surridge has taken care of that issue, so it may be a moot point anyway. But I think to get the discussion going and to help the Affordable Trust, let's ask the town manager to look at the alternative sites. And if he comes up nothing with that, then we can, then we can look at the feasibility. We'll revisit it down the end, but as it sits right now, let us proceed accordingly unless there's any objection. Did that make sense?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate your input. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of opening Patterson, Patterson Street parking area for the rail trail parking. The town manager.
Not so sure whether you want to table this or look at it, but we have had some requests for parking down in this area for the rail trail entrance, and Griffin's Committee was nice enough to point out that we actually have this parking space here. And there is sidewalks that go to either way to this rail trail. So I talked to John Stone, and we thought if we do want to open it, it, apparently it was closed back a while back before I got here.
Where's the parking lot?
Right on.
Right where my arrow is.
Right, no, and which is the one that they want us to open? That's the one?
That's the one.
It's just.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we thought we could use it and, and have, with some signage to link it to the rail trail. So folks do have parking, and again, there's sidewalks on either, either way to get down to that rail trail entrance, which is what this is right here.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense. Obviously, I've heard complaints of people on Monroe Street that people are packing in front of their house. If we can offer any, any abatement to that, I think it's a good idea. There's, you know, it's an open area. The parking lot I went down there the other day is certainly big enough to accommodate. And the whole idea of walking the rail trail is you pack your car and you can walk to the rail trail. So it would make perfect sense to, to do that, in my estimation. Is there any discussion from the board?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, is there a motion? Motion to authorize the opening of Patterson Street parking area?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Just second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Okay, next item, vote to approve the closing of roadways and the use of North and Center Schools for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 17th. Yes, sir.
Just a question. Richard Hannah, all the lots, just so you know, the town has a key to it too.
Right.
Use the same one. Now, we have two gates there. Do you want both of them open, or do you want just one of them open?
You can work that out with the town.
Okay, that's fine. Just as long as I get some direction.
Yep, he'll, he'll be in touch with you. For the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 17th, I would assume that's Washington Adams, North Avenue, and at least Railroad. And I would suggest that the motion encompassed to authorize the town manager with the, in consultation with the police chief to close any other side roads that may be necessary and fitting in profit to accommodate the parade. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, so voted. The minutes of October 23rd is the remotion.
I'll make a motion, that will approve the minutes, as Rid.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Any abstentions? If not, so voted.
This isn't the November 13th?
November 13th. This is the November 13th minutes.
Okay, what about the October 23rd?
You just voted, yeah.
That's what we voted?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's where I was confused.
November 13th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the November 13th.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, so voted. Town manager's report.
Sure thing. And I will sort of lap into number seven. We skipped over the Hancock Street, just to let you folks know that we are still monitoring that situation. I did talk with the DPW Director, John Stone, and Chief Delpapa. They have increased enforcement up there, and they'll continue to do that and sort of monitor that situation and, you know, get another week or so of detail, and we'll bring, we'll bring it back up once we've got some more info. I want to give you an update. We are currently working, the communications team here, which is the IT Director, our consultant Samantha Linehan from In-House Alternatives and myself, along with Tony Moquin. We've been working on finding a new, a new website, a hosting platform. We're currently with Civics Plus, and there's a new company called Aptige that we're, we're moving over. So ultimately, it'll be a much more streamlined, user-friendly experience on both ends, the user end, but even more so on the backend where department heads and chair, chairmen of boards and committees have to actually access this to update information. The current one is very difficult to use and somewhat intimidating. So we're looking forward to that. I think that the residents will see it looking like, again, more streamlined, much more easy to navigate as well. One of the nicer features of this is it actually, we'll also have a mobile application. So there'll be what we'll kind of call the Green Wave app that will be on any of your mobile devices. It will, and unlike most apps that are out there, it doesn't just sort of send you to a watered-down version of the actual website, but this will have a actual app-friendly website and calendar and different things that you can do with this app. So we're looking forward to that. That part will be out in late spring. I expect the rest of it to be transferred over by February, end of February. I'd like to remind everyone, annual town meeting scheduled for Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 7:00 PM. We will be at Abington High School Auditorium. The town meeting warrant is currently open but set to close on February 12th. Any individuals who are interested in submitting a citizen petition can find information on how to do that on our website. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or concerns. Be happy to go over the process with you. Governor Healy had an address to the Mass Municipal Association the other day. We do expect her budget to be filed later this week, hopefully Wednesday. But in her address, the governor did articulate her commitment to supporting the local municipalities. She is proposing 2% increase to unrestricted government aid and 3% increase to Chapter 70 school funding. So we are pretty happy about that. Obviously, we would have liked to have seen those percentages be a little bit higher. But she does also include an additional $400 million that'll go towards Chapter 90. So we were looking forward to that because we have put quite a significant investment into our roads here over the last few years. So every little bit of Chapter 90 money will help continue that effort. Representatives from the South Shore Regional Vocational Technical High School will be here in the Carter Room this coming Thursday, January, January 25th at 7:00 PM. They're going to conduct a comprehensive review of the proposed South Shore Votech Construction Project. This project is estimated to cost somewhere between $256 and $300 million, depending on what design scheme they choose and what they are going to use, going to use for enrollment numbers. The assessment to Abington is projected to fall somewhere between $35 and $40 million. Superintendent Hickey has also extended an invitation for a member of this board to serve as an informal liaison for the project. The role involves facilitating communication and ensuring that the community remains well-informed as the project progresses. He also has said in that that he will continue to update me along, so, so if. He also has said in that that he will continue to update me along, so, so if anyone here is interested in that, just let me know, and I'll hook you up with Tom's contact information. But if not, he will continue to keep us updated through me.
At some point, I, I can't make Thursday's meeting, but could you ask him if he could make a presentation to the board? Because I have a lot of questions, quite frankly, in terms of the district, as I understand the vote, it's in the aggregate, not individually, and then we would be, there's a whole host of pitfalls, I see, but in any event, that's need, I suggest at some point, maybe we have him.
He, within, within his correspondence, he did put that out there, that he would be happy to come and meet with, with this committee and, or the Finance Committee as well, so.
Yeah.
I will let him know and see if I can get him on our schedule.
Yeah, and, and I would suggest that maybe invite the FinCom to that meeting, just so, for his edification to, so he doesn't have to bounce all around. Okay, is that it?
One question in the audience, and Kevin, did you have a question?
Yeah, Hancock Street. Is the speed regulation on Hancock Street?
Yes, you have to come up. I'm sorry.
I mean, I wasn't here this morning. So Mary in Papasino, six oh nine Hancock. Back in twenty nineteen, I had approached the town manager about the speeding issue on Hancock Street, and the police actually used our driveway to monitor the cars, I mean, they, they absolutely speed. I mean, I'm sure this is not anything new to you. But I was wondering, from, from that information, how come it's been so long since it's been brought up again? I mean, this is twenty nineteen, and it kind of was just.
We just had it at the last meeting. At the, at the last town meeting.
Okay.
We changed the rules. We did look at it back in twenty nineteen, I was on the board then, and we had no choice, but the way the law was written, we had to keep it forty, well, because it wasn't thickly settled, technically. We had to keep it forty or move it to a special speed zone, which made it twenty, which was a little ridiculous. So there was no middle ground we could do.
Okay.
So we changed the rules at the last town meeting.
Okay.
That now we can, now we have the option to go thirty-five, thirty. So that's what we're looking to do. We're doing a little research first, just so we have some backup.
All right.
But it's going to happen.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I'm a, we have a farm, we ride the horses down the streets, hold on our neighbors, and they, they just fly, and I'm just afraid.
I grew up at four sixty-nine.
Yes, okay.
I used to fly down that street all the time.
But anyways, so I'm just curious as to where that was going. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, if not, the motion entered into executive session for the purposes of litigation and to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will reconvene, we may or may not take a vote, and it may be as simple as to adjourn, but depending on what we talk about in executive session, requires, is there a motion, first of all?
So moved.
Second, is there a second motion? Second, roll call, Mr. Justbury.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.